Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, how's it going? How are you all?
One second, one second.
Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome to today's work session. I'm pleased that we have Accenture with us today. They will be providing us an update with respect to the work that they've been doing on our strategic plan. But before they get started, I believe we're going to have an intro from our deputy county manager, Jimmy Geese.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. I feel like we're at a momentous occasion here where we're going to hear the presentation of our findings through our study for a strategic plan for Cobb County government. A strategic plan is just that, it's very strategic thinking, it's looking ahead. It will hopefully provide us direction for the future, something that we can benchmark a lot of the things that we undertake as a governmental entity. The county has contracted with Accenture to perform our strategic plan, and with us today we have Lakeisha Sase, Brian Walker, and Patrick Moore, who will be making the presentation. And once it's completed, I'll come back up and get direction on how the board would like to proceed. So this time, I believe Lakeisha's going to lead it off.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Thanks for having us today, and thank you, Jimmy, for the introduction. As mentioned, my name is Lakeisha Sase, and I'm with Accenture, and I have been given the honor to help lead the development of Cobb County's 2023 through 2028 comprehensive countywide strategic plan. And today, myself and my colleagues are here to brief some strategic recommendations that we've made that have been uncovered throughout this process of plan development. Today, we would like to talk through a few things with you all. We want to share the plan development overview, so the process and how we got to where we are today. We'll share some overarching themes from data. We also will share the shortlisted strategic outcome areas of which the strategic recommendations follow, and then we will then brief and highlight some key strategic recommendations. And Commissioners, please, and Chairwomen, please, feel free to ask questions as we go along for clarification or discussion. All right? So for the plan development overview, we've been working with the county since September of 2022, and our four-step process really was structured in two ways. There were discovery, research methods, and activities that were deployed in the first three to four months of the project, and then we moved into the ideation phase. We got a chance to work with Commissioners at the retreat to co-create goal statements alongside the outcome areas, and then we were able to develop success indicators from challenges and opportunities that were uncovered during our research, and now have formulated some draft strategic insights and recommendations. All right? Big research questions really guided this work for us, and we ensured that we asked research questions to the mix of stakeholders that we engaged, and we also asked some research questions that were answered through data trends analysis. One of the key questions that was posed to county stakeholders across the board was, what are the most important and relevant focus areas for the county to prioritize over the next five years? And it's from that question that we were able to shortlist the outcome areas that we'll share today. This just states that we did engage a cross-section of county stakeholders to develop this plan. We talked to citizens across the county, we hosted district listening sessions, we talked to business leaders, we had a workshop at the Cobb Chamber of Commerce, community organizations and representatives were at some of our engagement activities. We also engaged the education systems, so K-12 schools, university systems, and technical schools here in the county, as well as internally. So we wanted to just thank all of the participation from Cobb County leaders and staff, because they also participated in this process and provided feedback. All right? And as I mentioned, we deployed a variety of different stakeholder methods to outline the strategy, so one-on-one and group interviews, district listening sessions, the workshops, the community roundtable. We deployed a countywide survey and again conducted that county data trends analysis that took a look at historical data and made some projections, which we'll also discuss a little bit today. So from the output of all of that discovery work, we noticed that across all of the outcome areas, regardless of what they were, there were themes or ideas that consistently emerged across the board. Accessibility was one of those themes. So stakeholders recognized the importance of making the county's resources and assets accessible to all residents in the county. Adequate funding and finances also emerged as a key theme, so referencing the need for the county to seek adequate funding to support county service expansion and infrastructure. Affordability was a theme that we heard across the board. Cobb County is not unique in this sense, but there is rising unaffordability happening across the nation, and that is also something that stakeholders found important. Connectivity was another theme that came across. So stakeholders recognized that there was a need for the county's transportation infrastructure to enable connectivity between neighborhoods and surrounding communities. Diversity. Stakeholders recognized that Cobb County is home to a diversity of people, opportunities, geographic areas, and needs. Resilience, so wanting the county to become more proactive so that operationally can withstand future changes. Governance and leadership was also a theme, just the importance there for cohesive and collaborative leadership in the county. Innovation showed up. Stakeholders expressed a desire for the county to invest in innovation to further establish Cobb's competitive advantage as a county. There were many great things said about Cobb County from stakeholders. Safe communities was also a theme, and sustainable growth, so recognizing the importance of preparing the county for growth in a way that accelerates long-term growth but also enables preservation. So we have shortlisted seven outcome areas, and thank you Commissioners for helping us co-create the goal statements associated with these. So the first one's community development. Cobb County is a place, the goal statement that was developed is Cobb County is a place where land use policy and resources are used to thoughtfully and strategically develop and preserve communities' natural and historic assets. Economic development strategic goal is Cobb County is a place where people and businesses have an opportunity to thrive economically. Efficient and effective government. Cobb County is a place where leaders are transparent, collaborative, and efficient in offering services and making data-driven decisions and managing resources. Housing. Cobb County is a place where people have access to a variety of housing options. Infrastructure. Cobb County is a place where facilities and innovative systems support effective county services and sustainable growth. Mobility and transportation. Cobb County is a place where people and goods safely reach destinations efficiently through a well-maintained and connected network of roads, sidewalks, trails, and transit. And public safety, Cobb is a place where all people feel safe to live, work, play, and visit. All right? And last statement for me before I hand it to my colleague to brief the strategic recommendations is just wanted to outline the method that we use to develop these recommendations. So as I mentioned, all of the work that we did in the discovery phase informed the shortlist of the outcome areas that I just briefed, and the primary question that the outcome areas answer is, what are the most relevant focus areas for the county? From there, we developed strategic goals. Strategic goals, again, were developed from understanding challenges and opportunities associated with those outcome areas, and they answer what are we striving towards. Success indicators were also developed, and they answer what will success look like in this outcome area, and then we developed strategic questions to prompt and probe strategic recommendations. All right? Any questions about the process, Commissioners?
No, thank you for that overview. Just one thing, not related to the substance of this, but we don't have a copy of those introductory slides. We would love to have them, that can help us as we communicate this work out.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that's available, Chairwoman.
Thank you.
Brian, I'm going to call upon you next.
Thank you, Keisha. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners and Madam County Chair. Thank you so much. This is extremely exciting for me. I've called Cobb County my home for eight years now, and so to be able to address you all this afternoon is very exciting. So thank you for the opportunity to work with you and to learn from you and learn with you the strategic recommendations that we put before you. Before we get into the actual recommendations, I want to start with this slide and these four or five overarching aspects or elements that really guide all of the strategic recommendations. And I'll just walk through them real quickly and pause at the end for any questions. But the first is that, can be parallel priorities that should be implemented based on complexity of implementation and also availability of resources. And we use the term "resources" to encompass both financial and workforce resources. The recommendations are countywide and are not intended to supersede or to conflict with district priorities. The survey and the process that we used was to capture an entire county perspective and to put forward an entire county perspective. Point three is, the recommendations are strategic, they're not documented at the project level, so there is flexibility at that level to add relevant initiatives. And with each of you in the conversations, I know that I've used the analogy of the proper altitude of identifying what is the proper altitude for the strategic recommendation, where can it be actionable, what is left to action on, but trying to find that proper altitude for these recommendations. So these recommendations seek to hone the goals and the strategic initiatives into actual recommendations, but that can then be action beyond that. So also, and I will point this out in a couple of the, in the actual recommendations book for check four, it's not all strategies imply net new initiatives. There are already actions that you have taken as a board, that the staff have taken that have moved these goals forward. They are, they can also be, it's not intended for only the board to extend or to action these goals. They can be done through partnerships and through encouragement of other parties that work with the board to advance the goals. And the last check is that this is absolutely up to the Board of Commission to determine which strategic recommendations are formally adopted, if it's necessary, if it calls for adoption and implementation. So with that, I'll pause to see if there's any questions regarding those checkpoints, or we can dive right in. Okay? Thank you. So the first that we started with today is a strategy of effective and efficient government. All of the others, we just put them in alphabetical order, but for this one, we wanted to start with effective and efficient government, because we really do view this as the vine upon which all of the other goals live. This is what, as strong a foundation that can be built through this goal will yield the results of all of the additional goals. And so that's why we started here, with each of the success indicators to the left, and then strategic initiatives are under the success indicators listed on the right. And I'm not going to walk you through or speak to every single one of them today. There are well over 45 different specific recommendations, so I'll just highlight two or three in each slide, and I'll pause for, but if you want to speak to one of them, or if you have any questions about any of them, feel free to please ask, and I'll either answer or I will turn to my colleagues to help and to provide an answer. But identifying them specifically, one is the explore innovative tools and techniques efficiently engage community stakeholders. That's the first check under customer and employee satisfaction. Another couple is evaluate the current and projected demand for county services. That would be under efficient public services, and then also collect and publish purpose-driven data based on strategic priorities. And as I understand, what I interpret as purpose-driven data is data that's capable of measuring performance outcomes on an identified purpose for deployed resources. So it's really using, identifying, either through KPIs, but identifying the data necessarily, capturing that data, and compiling it to measure the resources or the initiative that's being put forward. That's what we mean by purpose-driven data. Okay? Thank you. So this is the next slide of the final two of the data-driven governance that I mentioned earlier, and I apologize for that, I didn't move the slide forward. So for county infrastructure, number one is develop capital improvement plan that prioritizes the upgrade and modernization of outdated county infrastructure. Also, we see as to develop a stormwater maintenance policy to clearly define Cobb water, Cobb DOT, and property owner responsibilities for maintaining stormwater drainage systems. That's under the resilient stormwater infrastructure. We did see in our information that we collected, a focus on stormwater and stormwater infrastructure. That was a point of emphasis, so we reflected that here. The last is examine space utilization across county facilities for future workforce and facilities, facilities planning. That's under the long-term instructional investments. I will say that this, I wanted to highlight this particular strategy because it is, we understand that there's already a study that's in flight. Again, this is one of, excuse me, this is one of the goals that the county commission has already started to action forward, and so again, I just want to tie back through the overarching recommendation themes, that this is one such instance where there is already action that's being taking place, that the board should be very proud to, that it aligns with what we've heard and what we've compiled here. And again, this is the final point of enhanced technology infrastructure, specifically focusing on cybersecurity and data security technologies for the county. We're all very aware of the increasing cyber threats that apply to all data and technology, and so we wanted to reflect that here. Regarding community development, so you'll notice that we broke out community development into its own, back to its own goal after speaking with you all and realizing that we wanted to broaden the explanation, the understanding of the differentiation between economic development and community development. We added this back in and coordinated the strategies associated with community development specifically. And so again, I just start at the kind of the top of identify and qualify place-based opportunities for revitalization and development. Place-based being a more targeted and identified instances of support where possible and where feasible. Number four is leverage data to identify resource gaps to enable strategic development. And also, I'll highlight the fifth check is to set a green space acreage goal for the county under green space preservation success indicator. Okay? Next is economic development. So again, differentiating between economic development and community development. Just point out the second check under economic empowerment and upward mobility is to support the expansion of workforce pathway programs, identifying and supporting those types of developments for the needs of Cobb's workforce. The fifth check is under enhanced collaboration and strengthened partnerships, is encourage strategic development activities that address critical resources needs across the county. And then finally, the other that I'd like to highlight is number nine, is to continue to evaluate and strengthen Cobb County International Airport's role as an economic generator and facilitator of growth, jobs, tourism, and trade, and recognizing its strategic importance to the county and the county's infrastructure. Next is for the success strategies is housing and livability. Again, we started with key success indicators, a greater mix of housing options, particularly use of data, to develop a county housing mix goal, establishing that goal. Also, explore the establishment of a county land baking authority. Explore, I'm sorry, explore the establishment of a county land baking authority. Again, I want to circle back to that particular strategic recommendation and the altitude of identifying what is the action, how that exploration takes place is up to the board and the actions associated with it, but we wanted to identify it as an opportunity. Then also collaborate with public and private partnerships to enhance funding support to address homelessness across the county. It's defined as preventing and addressing homelessness. We identified this, we allow this to be the strategic recommendation from this indicator because we also specifically received feedback by community members who are in the county recognizing that these unique economic times are creating unique homelessness circumstances. Some very powerful stories were shared, and we wanted to reflect that in the strategic recommendations for you all to consider. Next is mobility and transportation, specifically on enhanced transportation infrastructure. This will align county and federal transportation priorities to maximize funding resources. I know you all know through conversations that we've had that the federal government has made historic investments, made available historic investments to the infrastructure throughout our nation, and Cobb County stands to be one of the beneficiaries of those investments. And so we wanted to recognize the opportunity for the county to coordinate through that, through those fund utilizations. So that's why we highlighted that particular strategic recommendation. The other that I'd like to point out is to identify and publish countywide transportation safety-related goals and success metrics. That's number four, under the proactively addressing transportation safety. Through additional work that I do with Accenture, I'm engaged with our transportation and infrastructure teams, and we know that safety is a significant priority for all DOTs and throughout the nation, and so that there are very specific opportunities associated with safety. We heard that aligned with what we heard from the sources that we received information from, and so we wanted to communicate that through and highlight that through not only the strategic recommendations, but also through the success indicators that were listed. We wanted to make sure that it was highlighted specifically. And the last that we have is public safety. And specifically, under public safety, garner, I like garner regional support and resources for the real-time crime center through conversations. We know that is a critical resource that was referenced. Support public safety capital improvement initiatives under reliable and safe public safety infrastructure. And finally, invest in attracting and retaining high-quality public safety staff under the effective administration of justice at every level and through every information source. We recognize that having qualified and resourceful individuals on the public safety teams is critically necessary to effectuating the goals of the public safety units, and so we wanted to make sure that that was reflected in these recommendations. So, Madam Chair, with that, those are the goals and the success indicators. Again, I know that I moved through those quickly, but I also want to make sure that if there's any additional questions or thoughts regarding the...
Thank you for the presentation today. I'll first lead off by saying thank you for all of the work that you've done in walking us through a pretty robust strategic planning process. This is a significant undertaking for us, and it was important for us to engage stakeholders as we move forward, and you certainly have done that in bringing forward these recommendations in addition to working with the Board of Commissioners during our retreat this year. So thank you for that work first. Second, I'm going to just walk through or go down the dais and see what questions Commissioners may have, and I'll start with you, Commissioner Garmbrill.
Thank you. My first one comes on the community development page.
Okay.
You say, set a green space acreage goal for the county. In 2004, there was a state law put out that the county had to have a 10% green space. So I guess my question to, that the county attorney needs to address is, has that state law changed? And that is one of the driving factors that led to the 2008 and 2006 Parks Bond that the county did. So I guess for this goal, again, are we not in compliance with state law? Do we need to get there? I would just like clarification on that.
Okay, why don't we answer each question? One at a time. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, we'll be happy to look at that and try to tie it into whatever the state law is that you're particularly referring to. Is it regarding new development, or is it relating to all space has to be set aside at least 10%?
Again, this was back in 2004 when I found this, but it was law that was specifically put in space that kind of mandated counties save 10% of their land as green space. And at that time, I know Cobb County was getting very close to that 10% mark, which is kind of why the '06 and the '08 Parks Bond came out was enabled us to
Expand it, yeah.
Bank that land. So my question is, has it changed since 2004? Has it been modified? And I guess, are we still in compliance, given all the green space that we have purchased?
I'll be happy to figure out what the code section is and look at it, and then work, if this is a goal that the board wants to work with, to set the green space acreage as part of it, that are working in compliance with whatever the county code, or excuse me, the state law is.
Okay, and I can share with you who the author is.
Sure.
Thank you, please, if it's related to that.
It is, I remember that well, because I was in the waste industry, recycling industry. It wasn't a mandate, it was a goal, and I don't know of any counties that reached the goal. And I think it has expired, but it was a goal that came out from the state for all the counties to try to reach. the counties to try to reach, to attain that 10%. And I don't know of any that actually, I know you said we got close, but I don't know of any that actually attained the mark.
I'm reading a report online.
Well, we could, yeah.
I'm reading a report online, and it was a grant program associated with 20% set aside for green space. So yes, that would be consistent with what you're sharing. It was to incentivize preservation, not necessarily to mandate preservation.
And that wasn't what I was referring to. But again, Bill, I will find that document from 2004 and just send it, share it with you.
Okay, what other questions do you have, Commissioner?
Then my next biggest concern is the economic development slide in totality. Because when I originally read this, the first thing that came to my mind is this is everything that the chamber currently does and select Cobb currently does. So why would the county be doing what the chamber and select Cobb do? I understand that we should be working with the chamber, but to me, this is putting the Cobb in the driver's seat to these economic development initiatives when this should be left to the chamber. So that was just kind of a, an overall arching concern that I had when I read this is this is just not the county supporting our partners that are put here to do these things that the county was going to do them. And again, I can see great conflict if the county starts interjecting itself into bringing businesses to the county.
This is a dominant activity of government to be engaged in economic development, but we can do this in partnership with the chamber, and we are a partner with them, with their select Cobb effort. And I think what was put on the screen or was listed as a success indicator doesn't conflict with that relationship and in fact talks about enhanced collaboration and strengthened partnerships. But we own that. We own an incentive process here in the county, and we have the appropriate agency to determine the economic future of this county. And we certainly do have some activities that the chamber participates in, but I'd hate for us to put a narrative out there that this strategic plan is looking to modify or mar that relationship. What I perceived is that this is a broad goal is for us to achieve those success indicators that are listed on the left. And I think it's important that we walk out of this meeting recognizing that partnership, but also recognizing our role in economic development. It is a key function of government. And what the chamber does for us is a significant work, but they don't have the level of accountability to the citizens when it comes to economic development as a government jurisdiction does to our voters and to their tax dollars that incentivize economic development. I think this is also consistent with us being a subdivision of the state. Counties are a subdivision of the state, and the state has an economic development partner. They partner with the chamber, the Georgia Chamber, local chambers. They were recently at a local event that we had here in District Four. But Cobb County, Cobb County government was well represented and rightfully represented at that business event.
I agree with, I agree with you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm not sure if there was a question for, from Commissioner Gambrell on additional question, anything specifically about the, about the strategic recommendations. Again, I would only reference back to the overarching guidelines of the recommendations to, that these will be leveraged as partnerships and, and coordinations with other entities, third parties, as well as subdivisions of the county, of the commission where possible. So.
And again, I wasn't reading this as a partnership because there's words like, you know, support the expansion of workforce pathways, you know, encourage business recruitment. And again, we, we sign that out to like Workforce, Workforce Cobb, we do Select Cobb. So I don't see anything about partnerships, but the way I was reading this is the county was going to undertake doing those initiatives, not the partners that we were doing. Because it doesn't say anything about partnerships. It was reading to me like the county's going to be doing this.
Understood.
Yeah, then, again, I just don't see anywhere where that's limited. All throughout this deck are the words partnership or collaboration where we recognize this is a county interest. Again, I think that's what the strategic plan is recognizing, what are dominant interests of the county, recognizing there'll be multiple stakeholders. I just, I'm challenged to see how that text saying that we support something shows that we are precluding someone from being a partner in an area that we support. I don't know if I saw a hand. Okay. I just, forgive me, I do want to encourage open dialogue. I just, I do not want that narrative coming out of this meeting. And I think it's very important to address that.
And I think it's also very clear that in our policy that we're not supposed to be attacking the opinions of other commissioners, so I am sharing my opinion. Ensure the county's unified development code enables a variety of housing types. When are we looking at the strategic plan being approved and finalized?
I'm, I'm sorry, was this?
I'm sorry, I skipped ahead to the...
That's okay, all right. I didn't want to move, I didn't want to move the slide too quickly.
Yes, and I'm sharing the housing and livability. It says, "Ensure the county's unified development code enables a variety of housing types." When is the strategic plan to be finalized? Because I thought it was going to be finalized in the next few months. Yes, no? Do we have a date of when this will be finalized?
Madam, Madam County Manager?
Yes, the next step would be for us to revise any changes that you all want to make and then get those back to you in a timely manner to review, and then bring it forward in an agenda item for board adoption. So that kind of depends on the time and speed in which you all give us feedback, and then we would share that feedback, of course, with Excentrum. They would get it back to you, and we're hoping to get an agenda item during the month of April. If not, we will push it back to May. But the goal is we have to adopt it, to effectuate it.
So to that end, I'm concerned about including the county's unified development code in here because we don't know what that's going to be. And that's not going to be out for another year, I think was the timeline. It was supposed to be 18 months that that one was going to take.
I hear that.
So I'm concerned about having that in here because, again, we don't know what that's going to look like. Now, if you would rather reference our comprehensive plan that we know is an approved document that we are going by, which the UDC is supposed to complement, I could see that being a better document to reference than one that's not even created at this time.
Okay. Let me just share that we don't have dates or timelines by each of these strategic indicators. So a lot of this, Commissioner, to your point, will probably be ongoing. So as we look at the UDC and our code, we would just be making sure that we are including in, in both of those as they work parallel, that we have a variety of options that we're considering. This doesn't bind the board to anything other than here are some strategic, yeah, indicators that, to determine whether or not we're meeting some of the metrics that we're setting ourselves up to try to meet some of our strategic goals. So I don't know if you want to wordsmith it a little bit differently to include the existing code. We're open to doing that, but I just want the board to know and the public to know that this doesn't bind you to, you have to do this before the UDC is adopted by the board.
And I, I understand what you're saying, but I guess if we're going to do this document, I would rather have, you know, reference documents that are already approved and being utilized. And the comprehensive plan, to my knowledge, the UDC is not going to change the, the foundation of which our comprehensive plan is. The UDC is just supposed to help streamline
Stream line, right.
The process for staff to essentially get a developer from rezoning to, you know, coming out of the ground. So in that regards, I would like to see this refer to our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And that could also then flow into our mobility section because, again, we just approved the DOT comprehensive plan and submitted that to the ARC. So again, to me, those are kind of already controlling documents that were supposed to be used to make policy decisions. And if this is kind of that next layer, we need to be referencing our existing policy documents.
Understood. So staff will make note of that, and we will address that. It looks like, Lakeisha, do you have some, you want to share on that point?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
We can, we can take that point.
This is exactly what I'm talking about, is your feedback, that we're gathering your feedback, and we will get the document back to you, and then upon... I think I'd exceeded my five minutes according to the... No. No. But, okay, so duly noted, Commissioner. We'll do that and as well as the other Commissioners' comments, and then we'll get it back to you for one final look see, and then bring it back for board adoption.
Piggybacking off of Commissioner, I think that point can be made without referring to the UDC.
And then just again, going to the mobility and transportation slide, you know, it says, "Identify and publish countywide transportation safety related goals and success metrics." Again, this is where we've already gotten documents that the county has in place that we need to make sure are inserted throughout this document. And this is where, you know, Drew and then also Jessica with community development, if there's other controlling documents, you know, because like on the, on the comprehensive plan, I know there's some small areas, policy documents that aren't necessarily in the comp plan, but that we still use, and also our Parks Department, we need to have those included in these areas as a reference. And then my last comment is on the public safety slide. It says, "Expand the county's anti-recidivism efforts." Is this a county goal or is this a goal of the DA's office? Because to me, this is kind of a goal that, this is something that the DA has been targeting, and we don't know if the next DA will have that same process or thoughts. So putting that in there, to me, is kind of saying where the next DA will come in and pick up. So it was my only concern of, do we really want to, again, to keep that one in there? Because to me, that's, that's an individual constitutional officer's goals right now.
So just to, to comment on that one. Lakeisha, do you want to come in on that one?
No, I just wanted to say that we heard extensively through the process that
Yeah.
Expanding the county's anti-recidivism efforts was a mechanism to proactively address crime and safety. So technically, we could move that into, up under the proactively addressing crime and safety, since it's referring to that point. But it was referenced as a county priority.
But as a county priority, it's not something this board can direct or control. This comes out of the courts. So my understanding is, you know, we, we really don't control what the courts do. I mean, we fund them, but then they, they function as their own entity. So putting that in here, to me, is putting that responsibility back at the board level and not where it belongs.
So let me give you another perspective. You fund those departments, right? The electus budgets, including accountability courts, and you ask for data-driven metrics when they ask you for funding for different programs, right? To include addressing recidivism and keeping folk out of our detention centers. So one of the things that we're trying to address is, how are we doing that? How are we measuring that? And when you ask the courts to share with you data that, that demonstrate that the programs that you're funding is working, this is a metrics by which we're saying as an indicator, the programs that the board is funding, they're, they're working or working toward a goal. I, I don't want us to leave thinking that anti-recidivism is only the DA's responsibility. It is all of ours responsibility from, you know, the kids who go to our parks and libraries and other places and keeping them, you know, off the streets and not using drugs. That's a community-wide, shared vision for Cobb. So with that being said, I'm open to how you may want to rephrase it, but I always want us to think about reducing crime and helping our youth is a county-wide goal and vision for all of us so that we, you know, that we're all looking and working toward a common goal, and that is keeping people out of our detention center, which is a money-saving measure, as well as impacting your, your workforce.
So then I guess my question would be, instead of pointing out recidivism, anti-recidism specifically, can we figure out another word that encompasses all of those programs that the courts offer? Because again, they all do work together instead of just pulling out one individually. Is there, is there another word that we can come up with that is all encompassing of everything that our courts do for our community?
Well, that actually is the word. Recidivism is keeping you from that vicious circle of going back into the system, but we can see, we can find a synonym that would, would be better served. But it doesn't, anti-recidivism doesn't necessarily mean a particular crime by name. It is keeping people out of the system, ways in which you are investing into many programs to keep them from either, one, getting into the system altogether, or two, preventing them from returning back to the system. But we can certainly try to wordsmith that, Commissioner. Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Gambrell, we also wanted to just mention, to reiterate, these are strategic recommendations. They are not at the project level. So expanding anti-recidivism efforts can be seen as a broad statement, and the mechanisms, right, that you're referencing, the different types of programs, where those programs sit, how they are administered, those are project-specific. So, so just wanted to make sure that we reiterated that this is not intended to be at that level of detail.
Right, and I guess where, you know, I'm, again, struggling is, we never, we've always had the accountability courts, and that's kind of how it's always been, and the anti-recidism has only come into use since the new official stepped into the DA's office. So that's why, you know, I know we've had a lot of these programs in place, so that's, it's kind of like, you know, that word just kind of popped in. So, you know, we've been doing a lot of these things, but how can we, again, be, you know... So, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, and certainly thank you all for the very cumbersome work of pulling all of our opinions together across the county. I do have quite a few questions. I recognize that this is not that extra level of depth that I, I would like to see from a recommendation standpoint, because we do know that we have some critical issues that are going to take multiple years for us to accommodate, so I'll get to some of those. But I'll just go in order. So for effective and efficient government, one of the things that I was looking to see, and maybe it's somewhere and I missed it, is the cross-department collaborative initiatives, how, as, as a county, that we would look at ways to facilitate that collaboration in a significant way. I know that departments currently take that on themselves and try to see where those opportunities are or when something, if there's an emergency that crops up, that usually indicates, hey, let's, let's all hop on a call. indicates, hey, let's, let's all hop on a call and do something. But perhaps if there was a proactive way or approach to both create those opportunities and facilitate those opportunities, and then whatever the outcomes are to implement those cross-referenced analyses. So it includes collating data. You know, one of the examples I usually like to use is whenever we build a road, there are utilities involved and there's broadband involved. And we know that that's across the network, including looking at compounding impacts. So this, this comes up with development as well. We may be analyzing the stormwater flow for that particular parcel, but also how does that fit within the context of runoff from the roadways and the development that's in queue to be approved, the one that hasn't been put up yet? How all of those things correspond to one another, I think, are critical. So it's really just, like I said, how do you facilitate that cross-collaboration, cross-department collaboration? And that we would want to commit to that. I don't know if that's something or if anyone else wants to chime in before I go to the next.
Yeah, that is part of efficient government, is seeing how the departments are working together so we're reducing duplication or extensive time when they're not communicating. That would seem like an appropriate bucket.
Collaborative leadership in governance was, was something that emerged, so we can bring that back in as a success indicator. Again, the mechanism to which that would be deployed would be up to the county to do what's suitable, but we can certainly reference that again because there is data to support that point.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to county infrastructure. Not a new bucket, but like I said, I'm going to ask this question just because you've been in the conversations and I'm hoping to glean some insight. For the two items under resilient stormwater infrastructure, you can see where a lot of my interest is here, but we've got evaluate and address barriers to repairing and replacing failing stormwater infrastructure. It's evident that a lot of it is private infrastructure. And so even when we are able to find or expedite some of the work orders from a public infrastructure standpoint, that reconciliation is still difficult, so we're still going to be in the position of fail, of failure. And it's kind of like this ticking time bomb, time bomb on the way. Certainly, I have ideas for how to approach that, but I was just curious if there was, you know, either another layer of information that you gleaned in your conversations or if that separation came up frequently or something? Because I guess I understand we're dealing in the high level here.
The private property aspect, we did hear, actually in the last few weeks of this process, that there was an issue with like the delineation of responsibilities, of the division of responsibilities.
I see that one.
As it relates, right, to the responsibilities of Cobb County government versus a homeowner's. And so that's where we tried, we tried to capture that in that third point. I'm not sure if that's what, if that's related to what you're saying.
It's, it's close. I circled both of them because I was like, I think that's what they were trying to get at, but I was just curious, like I said, from your conversations.
Absolutely.
If there was, because that, that is a real issue. That's not just unique to Cobb County, but perhaps there was some insight that you could provide there. But certainly, you know, coming up with a way to move forward, it's just, we're still going to be in the same bucket, even if it's clear, hey, this is yours, this is ours. Even though it's theirs, we're talking some of this infrastructure is multiple millions of dollars. What homeowner can take care of that? Same bucket, same problem.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Let's see. For community development, with regards to sustainable development and green space preservation, and I know Chairwoman, you brought this up before, but even to the degree of understanding where there may be some code amendments that could be done in order to address some sustainability measures or practices that can go into place and even if not that prescriptive, finding a way to have the Sustainability Office elevate into that space and how we work with, you know, internally, Casey B. and the Sustainability Office, but that that would be a component to our sustainable development. And maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not articulating that properly, but...
Do you see expanding that bullet or changing it?
I'm, I'm wondering if it's an addition. Let me reread really quickly. I mean, point two, kind of, kind of touches on it, I guess.
Could you clarify, Commissioner? Which point?
For under sustainable development, sorry. The proactively examine and assess the county infrastructure's capacity for new development, kind of pertains to it. But I guess what I'm trying to do is say, you know, that we would expand or support some of the sustainability thought leadership from that office or something to that degree.
I see what you're saying.
Or leverage, greater, find opportunities to leverage the work of the Sustainability Office in the endeavors listed here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That was it for that one. Under economic development, I definitely, I do not see this as a contradiction with what Chamber does. I know that I've gotten feedback about having our partnership even have deeper commitment and investment behind it. And I think that's part of what this is getting to with actual dollars. I know other jurisdictions commit dollars to the Chamber and to select, to their respective chambers or other facilities that do economic development. So I was, I was fine with the points that were brought up here. Yeah, and it does call out partnership in some places. I just wanted to make sure as well that it was comprehensive there. Housing and livability, just to the point that Commissioner Gamble brought up earlier, I think, I think it makes a lot of sense to change it from the UDC to the comp plan, purely because of the purpose of what those documents, the role that they serve. And then the question that I had under attainable and quality housing options for explore the establishment of a county land banking authority, I was curious if there was another layer of information you could provide around that particular bullet point.
I didn't quite understand the question. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Under attainable and quality housing options, under explore the establishment of a county land banking authority, I was just curious if there was more insight that you could provide on that particular topic?
You can go.
Where that came from or what the thinking is.
It's a, it's a recommendation that's both from best practices when we look across the country at mechanisms for jurisdictions to enable long-term affordability. We didn't say support because we recognize there is a need to examine and assess this as an option first. But we also heard that from stakeholders that we interviewed in this area, both external to the county, some folks that you contract things to, like the CDBG program, for example. There were a few instances where exploring a land banking authority came up as an option. So we did validate that with some best practice research, but just can't right-size it yet for the county as a recommendation.
Understood. Thank you. Just curious. I have one more comment and then one more directive item. So under public safety, just to note for the comment that was brought up, I wanted to provide my, my thoughts on the anti-recidivism component. I do support having that in there. I mean, certainly open to any kind of wordsmithing, but I'm fine with that language as I do think those activities directly affect our bottom line as fiduciaries of taxpayer dollars. And, and all of those constitutional officers were a part of this strategic plan designations. Even though they, it may be beyond their term, it's also beyond our term. We're looking at, generally speaking, what type of investments need to be made and how do we position those resources? So I am fine with that particular aspect. And then the, the last one is, like I said, more of a directive. This is just, you know, looking at the key success indicators. Some of them I can easily translate into quantifiable metrics and some of them are more qualitative. So just as a hope that there would also be an included list of suggested quantifiable metrics associated with the indicators and even potentially looking at leading and lagging indicators around these as well so that we can track those peripheral metrics.
As we intend to have sample metrics in the final document.
Excellent. Thank you. Those are all of my comments. Appreciate the work.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson.
Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you first for all the time and detail that y'all have gone through with each one of us in, in working on, on this plan.
Thank you.
You know, there, there, overall, there are some good things in here that I agree with and support. There are some that I don't think are, are number one priority, so to speak. But the main concern is, I know these are recommendations, but when you say expand and increase and resources and funding, that they've got, there's money that has to be put towards that. And once it's out there and it's a commitment to the public that we're going to do these things, it's going to cost money. And where's that money going to come from? So, you know, there's, they're going to require, it's going to require funding and, and they have to be sustainable. So I'm not sure how you get around that with just saying it's a recommendation or a goal. Because once it's out there and the commitment's there, it's going to have to be funded and And, and that could mean increases in our property tax or fees or other resources for, to fund, to fund everything. I also think that we, we don't, to me, we need to be all-inclusive, like in the housing where we target certain areas under, in economic development or housing. We need to be equal across the board, not just concentrated in one specific area or group. That, that's just my opinion.
Can you expand on that?
Well, it, it says, like in the housing and livability, under attainable and quality housing options, use data to set an attainable housing goal for the county. What's an attainable housing? Affordability? I, I don't know. What's attainable housing? Affordable housing? It's just not clear. And when, when we say, let me see, I think it was in... Under economic development, you know, the market's going to determine where people are going to come for economic development. I mean, look at the battery because of the stadium and, and the Galleria in Cumberland. I mean, that's booming right now. So when you say, under economic development, encourage business recruitment in underdeveloped communities across the county? I think we should be encouraging development, business recruitment in all communities in the county, not just one area or if there is one area. I mean, the whole county has pockets of under, underdeveloped communities. I mean, South Cobb, East Cobb, West Cobb. I, I just think it needs to be all-inclusive, not just specific to one area. And then to me, on the infrastructure, I mean, infrastructure, we definitely need some help in stormwater management. But I think with the way it's worded, we're setting ourselves up for an increase in funding.
The way which one is worded?
Okay, let me find it.
That's okay.
I thought I had these listed. Okay, county infrastructure. Under resilient stormwater infrastructure, develop long-term funding strategies for an aging stormwater system. I'm looking at Judy Jones because she knows what I'm getting ready to say. To me, that's setting us up for a stormwater utility fee. And I can't, I don't support that. It's almost worth transferring. And I know this isn't about funding, but it is going to be about funding when it's all said and done, because we're going to have to do it. That's just my concerns of how we're going to fund these priorities.
Just to, to address the funding point, in the efficient and effective governa, government outcome area, one of the first success indicators, could you go to that one, please, Brian? One of the first success indicators is financial sustainability. We were intentionally not prescriptive about the methods in which the county should consider raising, you know, raising additional funds. There are a variety of different things that can be explored, from grant strategies, to your point, user fees. But ultimately, but ultimately, right, we're not being prescriptive in that way, but we did level set and say, right, like, financial sustainability is going to enable many of these outcomes. And once again, some of the, some, there are some actions or in-flight initiatives currently in the county that support these goals already. So arguably, without any additional effort or resources, right, some of these goals can still be made progress against. We recognize that there will be instances where in order to do something in the short medium or long term, it will require a policy change, external collaboration or additional funding. But we aren't being prescriptive in which ways to, to generate those funds. But we certainly can advise on, on different options for the county. We think that's going to be one of those things at the project level that gets determined over time for different initiatives.
Is it possible to state the same point without putting the word funding in there? If you were to develop a long-term strategy for maintaining or addressing an aging stormwater system?
Potentially, yes.
But how are you going to do that without money?
That, that may, that may be part of the discussion.
I know.
It's up to us. It's just making it broader to address your point that you shared earlier about some of the terms automatically implying that we're going to put money towards it.
And Commissioner Burrow, just to kind of put this in, onto a flip side, you could almost argue that the strategic plan are the only things that the county is going to focus on instead of the 60-some services we currently deliver. I mean, you could flip it back that way as well. Because again, you know, by law, we're only supposed to, is it 15 or 17 services? We're up into the 63, 68 services that the county provides. So you could flip this and say that the strategic plan is going to limit what the county does in the future as well.
Do you have a comment?
I don't.
Well, the only, but the only comment I would say is that you currently have a stormwater fee already. It's just not a dedicated fund. So we don't want the public to think... So we don't want the public to think, oh, my God, you're going to create another fee. They're already paying into a stormwater fee. And Judy can validate that with a head nod. Okay? So I want us to be very clear, we haven't, okay. So when your constituents confront you about a lot of the issues that involve flooding or whatever, they're expecting leadership. And leadership requires making some tough decisions about the mechanism and the how you're going to address the issues that your constituents are facing. Now, the century isn't telling you how to do it. That's where conversations and partnerships and grants and staff input, and we sit down and we figure out how we're going to do it and strategically determine the when. We incrementally do some things. But at some point, that rooster is going to come home. That rooster is going to come home to roost and there will be a board who says, what did you do to prepare for what we know is coming? Yeah, it's a tough, tough situation. And all they're doing is saying, people have identified that these are areas that are of concern. You have directors who also participated in this, in this study, who were in the audience today saying, these are issues that we are facing every day. Emails that the board and others send to them to try to fix, and they are policy issues that you all have to determine as priorities. We can't do it by ourselves.
And just one more thing. I just want to say thank you for putting up with me and all of us. But, but also for the additional information you sent that I had requested a few times. And it does show what categories were priority across unincorporated and the cities, the six cities so far. So thank you for sending, did you send it to everyone or do you want me to forward it?
You can't, we can, we can send it out to the other commissioners as well, no problem.
So it doesn't give me, well, it doesn't give me numbers of what the response rate was, but I don't know if you were able to get that.
The raw data should be on the other tabs from the email. So it's quite a bit of data, but I can't think of the, the tabs and, and how they're designed at the moment. But the quantity should be in there.
I'll dig a little deeper then. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you guys so much for meeting with us over the last several months and providing such a comprehensive list of recommendations. But this, this really puts us in a unique position in getting ahead of the challenges, right? It allows us to be proactive because we know that these things are coming. In just about every, every BOC meeting, we are approving the replacement of stormwater pipes because they have burst. And so we know that that's an issue. I receive lots of emails, particularly from our older communities built in the 70s or so, where those pipes are just out of code. So we know that these challenges are going to happen. So I'm, I'm grateful to be in a position to be proactive and to get in front of a lot of this stuff. But I want to go back to the themes from the data and accessibility. And if you can elaborate a little more on the county resources and the assets accessible, if the community shared any information as to which assets or resources they're feeling that they don't have access to?
Sure. So accessibility as a theme, as we mentioned, emerged across a variety of different topics. So it, we can't call out, well, I could, I guess, anecdotally call out a specific example, but it did apply across the board. So that's one point about that. Resources and assets, so mostly from community stakeholders, you hear things that likely aren't new to you all around, things that honestly might be outside of the purview of the county, private investments, but a lack of, of food, of grocery stores, for example, in some areas in the county. The data trends analysis that we pulled identified and showed that there's an area of the county where there's high population density, but there are fewer services there in relation to other parts of the county. Bus stops, for example, were one of the things that we were able to highlight with our data and show where there were obvious limitations in some parts of the county. And so this is just really a call out to consider, and I think we, we suggested that in the efficient and effective government pillar, we suggested a service utilization study or approach to really identify, assess those gaps further from the county's perspective, right, you guys. It's in your purview, what's in your purview are the public services that the county administers. We didn't do a detailed analysis on where public services are in relation to certain demographics or, you know, population density. But that could be something to consider in the future, just to ensure that this, this theme of accessibility is addressed, where we, where we saw limitations specifically in our data, again, our urgent centers, grocery stores and bus stops. But that can be furthered.
Okay, thank you. And the effective and efficient government, I recall at the Board of Commissioners Retreat, we talked about a succession plan. And I guess if I were to put that in one of the strategy categories, it would be the last one. But I didn't see it here unless it's just buried into another line.
No, we did, thanks, Commissioner, we did not add that. Our thought was that that was a bit specific or at the project level. But we can certainly consider raising that. We, we've heard that from a variety of places, even from community stakeholders, just average citizens, you know, the concern around succession planning in the county and what happens next. So we can certainly elevate that and try to make it strategic and not too specific, if y'all like.
We talked quite a bit already about evaluating and addressing the barriers for repairing and replacing the failing infrastructure. And while it may not be appropriate for this, I'm just hoping that my colleagues and I, we can have a broader conversation around what that looks like, particularly for private homeowners that are impacted. And I get that, to some degree, some of the repairs are their, are their responsibilities. But I just question some of the others. Okay. Also with county infrastructure, on enhancing the technology infrastructure. With the first bullet, I'd like to see a broader definition or scope to include on a district level. And one of the earlier conversations, it might have been with Ashley. I, I shared with her some of the concerns with people in the district or constituents with litter and some of some other items. And the recommendation was made to have data where we can track when these items are being addressed. So I don't know if this bullet includes on that level of detail or if it's just for the county as a whole, but I would like to see it broadened by district.
So specifically, Commissioner, technology itself, so technology investments based on district-specific needs, is that, okay. And we do recall that point about constituent services, technologies, and we had that discussion. That could be something that's applied, right, across the districts and still sort of countywide. But I guess just kind of looking at the needs across the diff, the different districts from a technology perspective is something we could certainly include.
Okay. Economic development, bullet three, and, and this has already been brought up regarding recruiting businesses in underdeveloped communities. I know there's a concern shared that we're targeting or there's specific communities, but this clearly says across the county. So Commissioner Burrow, I don't know if, if you would just expand on that for me a little bit. This is where you made the point that it was in specific areas, but I'm just... Yeah, and it says across the county. Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on your point, and I don't know that I was 100%. So is the concern that there should be development in areas that are already developed? Because this is specific to undeveloped areas.
But across the county.
Right. Yeah, yeah, that's what it has here, across the county. So if it was something else, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on your point.
We, we did attempt to strike that balance between recommendations that applied across the county, but also wanted to reiterate what came across very clear to us from engaging with community stakeholders in various districts, that there are, there are countywide priorities which we've hopefully laid out for you all. But there are different needs in different areas. And where appropriate, that would mean that there would be, or necessitate place-based strategies for some communities in order for them to develop in the way that they see fit, right? Because those are decisions that are made at the really hyper-local level. So we tried to balance that because that, that did come across very clearly. We're, we're obviously not trying to be exclusionary. But this point specifically is targeting underdeveloped communities because the goal is, or the success indicator is economic empowerment and upward mobility. In those areas, we recognize there's divestment and a lack of resources.
Right. And we do have redevelopment lists in identified areas throughout the county.
Mic. Microphone, microphone.
Yeah, we do, we do have, community development has redevelopment lists and identified certain areas that are underdeveloped or blighted or in need of redevelopment and repair.
Something also to address that we heard come across, so we just want to make sure that you guys understand, like, right, like, these are strategic recommendations and the, the way in which they are implemented likely would be determined by feasibility, right? And feasibility could be determined by how complex it is to implement some of these things. And so as a project manager, we always like to think that there are many things that can be done in the short term to move towards progress, even though some of these statements, ideas, strategies are quite bold and they may, for sure, extend beyond tenure and, and well into the future. But, you know, we stand here as ready and available partners to support with, with those ideas, but we just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay. Thanks again for everything. We really appreciate all of the time that you put in with us.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I know this was a lot of data you had to call. And this is just five people up here. You know, you've been to a number of meetings across the county and heard from different stakeholders. So I'm with it. I just have some general considerations tying into this slide that says context for strategic recommendations. I think part of what our varied opinions are getting towards are reflected in the second bullet and the last one, that the recommendations do not represent a final set of recommendations. These are recommendations based off of data that you've received from feedback. And I just think that's important because the timeline of this document says a strategic plan for five years. And it's, it's possible that needs may change in five years.
Absolutely correct.
So I have some, I won't say thoughts, questions about how we move towards implementation and then revisiting the strategic plan so that it reflects current interests. And this is where things do get sticky, as Commissioner Gamble reckon, or she recognized the DA, you know, elected leadership does come and go. And so the priorities of this study reflect the snapshot in time of which you received data. So as needs change, I think there just needs to be a healthy recognition of how we can flex these things to reflect where we are.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner, go ahead. Okay. Okay, so let's look at the screen here and the second bullet here. I know Commissioner Richardson pointed that out, and I also had some thought around it I'm afraid to share because I'm not trying to create any controversy. But the reality is, if there's a countywide goal, it's got to be accomplished somehow, some way, somewhere. And our county consists of districts. So the way we do this, unless it's a purely administrative function, if it's something that impacts a community or area, there's got to be a lot of thought towards the uniqueness of Cobb, but realizing that it's got to happen in Cobb for it to happen. If it happens in Cobb, it's got to happen in a district. So that's, that's where the tough conversations may be. You know, I've served on an affordable housing task force with the ARC, and we discussed how not all strategies fit all communities. For some, affordable housing may be a smaller home, not considering multifamily. In some communities, multifamily is a robust option. That's just one example. But I think that's going to be a tough discussion, any guidance around that should be appreciated. And then I do want to highlight Commissioner Burrow's point again about using certain terms that show direct investment. And looking at some of the bullets, I think some of those bullets can be modified to still achieve the outcome without necessarily saying invest in, fund, so that we can be open. And so at the end of the day, there isn't a citizen coming to us, pointing to us about, where's the money that you said you were going to put towards this? But again, I think it gets back to the second bullet on the strategic recommendations, that this is not a final set of recommendations. This is output from information you received. And I don't know how to highlight that throughout this, even if you had a disclaimer at the bottom. But I think that's important to put a disclaimer at the bottom because I feel like somebody's going to say, see, see what you said you were going to do. And, you know, maybe it's helpful to have that. Getting back to another point Commissioner Burrow shared about what attainable housing is, maybe in some instances, we can use additional verbiage to describe what something is as opposed to using the colloquial term or just have a vocabulary page in front so it's clear. In doing this, one suggestion I had, it says strategies for achieving these indicators. Maybe we just put some strategies for achieving these indicators. So it's showing these are suggested, these are, it kind of indicates there's not a finality. I just have one specific observation for public safety. I was going to save my recognition of this, but they had a phenomenal event this past weekend at the Public Safety Training Center. It was a Public Safety Community Day. And when I look at the success indicators, I just don't see the reflection of community, of collaboration and partnership that I've seen in some of the other success indicators. And that was really the key emphasis from how we started that program. Right now, when I read these bullets, they just seem to be more of a function solely within the department. So if there's some way similar to the economic development success indicators where you called out collaboration in that first bullet, it lists, I think it shows that, that prioritization of engaging the community and responding to the public. That's all that I had. Thank you so much for your work on this. I'm going to ask the commissioners where you want to go from here.
Going to ask about the next steps.
I mean, this is, and Jesse, Jimmy's standing up, so maybe he has some. Saved by Jimmy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Dr. Moore said, based on the amount of comments we've received, it might be good that we go back and start trying to incorporate some of those comments, or again, and then try to get that back to you for review. So it's probably going to be a stretch to have it by the April 11th, but I would hopefully say by the end of April, we would have the document back to you for you to review and then present it at the last meeting in April for adoption. then present it at the last meeting in April for adoption.
Okay. So commissioners and Jimmy and Dr. McMorris, here's an observation, too. Sometimes when we have robust documents, when it's presented to us, we'll take it back out to the community again for another review. And I think that would be fair, considering the amount of weight that this document will have on what we do. How can we include that in the feedback period prior to, I guess we determine that? So some observations I have, I think we can put this out there electronically for people to provide some feedback, or we could get back out to the community. I know Commissioner Richardson has a town hall meeting coming up. There could be opportunity to share it there. But similar to when we do even less robust tasks, when we have code amendment processes, we've been criticized for trying to approve something after we've made changes up here and it not going back out to the public. So I, I just don't want to get into that situation again, knowing that they've provided a lot of feedback into this process so far.
I believe we could, you know, once we get it to where the board is comfortable with it, have it placed on the, on the website, glancing at Ross. And then allow public comments to come in. If you do have any opportunities coming up, we could do the same thing there. But if not, we can definitely have it on our website.
Yeah. So, yeah, thoughts, yes? Commissioner Burl?
So will the discussion today and the, the changes or additions that we recommended be included before it goes back out with those comments to come in? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Then I, I don't see how we're going to do this by April.
No, ma'am, we're not.
To May.
I'm rewinding in my, in my head right now. No, it'll probably be in May.
Yeah. Any other thoughts from commissioners regarding that?
We can put, put the link that's on the website out in our newsletters and have people email us individually or as a board with suggestions and recommendations.
Just one observa... Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Gambro.
What, or if we receive questions, if we can set up a mailbox like we did with ARPA, specifically for questions.
I knew we had one for ARPA. I didn't know, I didn't know if we had one for the strategic plan. But we can. We can do that.
And just an observation, there are some people who are great about going online and doing web surveys, but going out to where some populations are, I think, is also important, or we're going to get from the group of people that typically go out and do online surveys. So I know, again, I just thought of your town hall because I know that's a public meeting, but I think we should be intentional about getting this in front of people.
Okay.
Commissioner Gambro, yeah?
As I say, my only other comment is I know there was a lot of blowback in the community for that meeting that was held on that Friday that was by invitation only, that I know myself, I wasn't aware of the meeting happening. And I know a lot in the community felt like it was a select group that was asked to review and not everybody had the opportunity. So I would prefer that we put it out, you know, for the general public to review, not have a select group, like we did at the end, I think it was March 31st, was that meeting? Or no? Whatever the date was.
Sure.
So that everybody has the ability. But then if you can kind of give us a heads up of when the document could potentially be finished, so that way those of us who also want to schedule town hall meetings so that we can get out one-on-one, have the ability to advertise that and then meet one-on-one with our constituents.
Sounds good. Might be June, but we'll get it.
That would be my suggestion, not precluding anybody from having their own meeting if they want to do that. But I think at least give commissioners opportunity to see if they'd like to have a town hall meeting prior to submitting this, what better help that by them?
We'll do it.
We also have to be mindful of the contract as well, in, in terms of, I see Accenture going, "Okay." I'm not sure when our engagement is also over with the Accenture. And we may, Friday, I thought so, it was the end of the month, 31st of this month. So we would need to think about commissioners, how we plan to do that. And Jimmy was tipping around that, I'm sure. But at the end of the day, we'd have to get back with the board on a, on a, perhaps a contract extension if we're going to do town halls and expect the consultant to be a part of that.
Yeah. I don't necessarily know if they need to be a part, you know.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Yes, that's an important top, that's an important matter, because even if they're a part, but how do they synthesize the data that may come back as a consideration? How do they synthesize the data from today? Today is the 28th, so you're talking three days the contract ends. Is that a robust time to...
Well, we had about five people taking notes, so...
Okay.
But we, we will come back with you on that.
Yes, it seems to be consensus.
We had anticipated that, you know, there's got to be some follow-up, some additional conversations amongst the board on how we prioritize, how you want staff to move forward with implementation. So we will sit down with the Accenture, Jimmy, and we'll talk through what that looks like and bring that back for you as well.
And, and that gets to the point of how does this become a living document so that we're not doing this for the exercise of it and then putting it back on a shelf? I would like to see some recommendations around that.
We've already begun to work on some of those, Chairwoman and Commissioners, on making sure that it doesn't become a static document on, on a shelf somewhere. So we're working on that.
This gets me to another point. I'm going backwards in the topic. I forgot to address it. There was data referred to all throughout the presentations. And I know at the retreat, Accenture provided this data tool. I think data could be very helpful for us as far as informing how we address some of these things. And I would like to see how we can better integrate that in whatever projects come out of this. Like, for instance, the example used was the bus stops, the grocery stores, and other amenity. But I think there could be other things that are telling us. For instance, the example that Commissioner Burl had, certain communities in the county that are underdeveloped, does data share what those communities are?
But we're in the process now of discussing how we can continue that, our access to that insights platform with our data in it. So we'll wrap it all into one, one package and talk with the board about it.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Deese.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership in the county and bringing all of this work together, as you have been helping to shepherd this through and operating as a liaison of sorts with Accenture and the board.
It was a team effort. We, this was one of those projects that we needed help on. So Judy Jones and Jotun Gibson, we were the tri-chairs of this one.
Thank you.
And of course, as always, Shannon keeps, keeps the whole thing glued together for us. But we're proud of the work so far, and we're not done yet, but we'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And thank you, Accenture, for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, with that, our meeting is adjourned. We'll be coming back here tonight for our 7:00 PM Board of Commissioners meeting.